Via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner. And it's what I just read, southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And you can see that we've just started at about 7:19 instead of our attempted start at seven, and that was because we had some technological difficulties that fortunately we've, as a team, have solved. So we'll go to our first item on the agenda, which is the master plan committee update. It's a discussion item. This is Latrell.
Well, Don, I'll quickly just say that there's two things we have to achieve tonight. There's an update request to the master plan committee charge because we're going to swap out Tim Davis, the recreation director, with Kristin LeValle from the Recreation Commission. They'll swap out seats. It'll be an ex officio, non-voting, non-quorum counting member. But the board will have to vote to appoint Ms. Kristin LeValle as representative from the Recreation Commission. Is that correct, Mimi?
Yeah, I think we have to accept the resignation of Tim Davis and then appoint Kristin.
Do we have the resignation?
Yes.
Mr. Mills? We need a motion to accept the resignation.
Make a motion, we accept the resignation of the Recreation Director. As a request.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Seeing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Next item would be to appoint?
Yes.
And what's the, what's the?
Kristin LeValle as ex officio member representing the Recreation Commission on the Master Plan Committee.
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah. Houlihan, yes.
Very good. And now we're ready for the update?
Yes, the update includes two items. It is the added seat of ex officio, one representative recommended by the Recreation Commission, and removal of the seat of Recreation Director, Director Ex officio. Those are the only two changes in the charge.
Which we did.
Yes, but you have to vote on updating the actual charge that gets sent to the town clerk so they can update the website and put in the expiration dates and all that.
Mr. Mills?
Make a motion, we update the charge as requested by the chairman.
I second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Seeing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah. Houlihan, yes.
Next item.
And just quickly, there's a master plan committee meeting scheduled for September 23rd at 7:30 PM. It'll be remote, so all wishing to attend can link through this website onto Zoom. And we're hoping as many MVC members attend that meeting as possible. Thank you. Next item is Chestnut Hill Farm Barn.
Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. Seven Chestnut Hill Road, major site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from July 13th and August 10th. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update.
Okay, at the last planning board meeting, as you said, was we received an extension request to continue the public hearing to this evening and action to September 18th. That extension was filed. We received a few items of additional information. The applicant had to go, the trustees had to go before the concert, didn't have to, but decided to go before the Conservation Commission last week's meeting and discuss the parking at the trailhead end of the project. The conservation restriction, it was interpreted that that parking is explicitly for trailhead parking. So they revisited the Conservation Commission and the Conservation Commission said that they're holding that stance but are asking for feedback from Sudbury Valley trustees on an opinion, perhaps to if 24 spaces are buildable there, that 10 be explicitly used to trailhead and that the other 14 could count towards the barn project. So that is still to be determined because that's the case. I know that the applicants are here in the attendees column and they probably want to update you on the status a little bit as well as to their intent and what they plan to do going forward, but we do have an additional extension request from them to continue the public hearing. Question is to how far out? The Conservation Commission's next meeting is October 1st, but they did indicate through the Conservation Agent that they would have an interim meeting if they got feedback from Sudbury Valley trustees prior to October 1st. Two, we received a traffic report from Bristol Transportation who did the traffic report for Chestnut Meadows subdivision. So we have that in hand. If the project moves forward based on looking at that report, I'd need feedback from the planning board if they want Fussin O'Neill to review that document as part of their review. I believe, I didn't read it fully, but I believe the bottom line is that they indicated not a significant impact to traffic based on the uses described, but I didn't read it fully. The second thing is that we received feedback from the applicant on handicap accessibility for the long walkway and the surface treatment of that gravel walkway. And the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, MAAB, which oversees accessibility indicated to the building department that they are, they find the surface treatment for the walkway acceptable because there were questions on whether it would be stable or get, you know, muddy or whatever, be too loose. So we received that. I did. There were some questions from residents regarding whether there were any conditions having to report back to the EEOA, Executive Office of Environmental Affairs regarding any changes on the farm due to the $500,000 grant back in 2005. If there were any conditions that you'd have to go back to them, but that when we read through that documentation, we believe it indicates that they only have to go back during the time the conservation restriction was being created. So that question, say they change the size of the conservation restriction and those types of things. Let's see. I think that's about all I have to update you from my end from what planning received to date. But again, I spoke with the trustees and asked them how they'd like to proceed and they anticipated giving a little update on their take of where they are with the project and where they intend to go.
Karina, the EEOA statements that you made, you and I had discussed that earlier. And what you said a few minutes ago is, is what you said a few minutes ago after having read through that since you and I talked? We talked earlier today about this.
Yes, I think Sarah researched the file. Bonnie Faniff had given us that question and said, you know, we should just make sure there's no requirement for that and because she was on the Board of Selectmen many years ago when that transaction took place, 2005. So Sarah looked at it after.
I did. There wasn't anything indicating any need to go back in that master agreement except with the exception of the time that the actual conservation restriction was being created. Once it's created, the restriction would then go over to the management side. And so, you know, they wouldn't go back to the grantor.
Yeah, Conservation holds the, oversees the restriction and they have a management plan. So every time they change a building or take something out or add something, they go to Conservation and they put it through the criteria there to make sure they don't go over a certain number of square feet, et cetera.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's the next step in this hearing?
We should allow the applicant's team to speak.
Yep.
Which would be Bob Murray.
Hello, Bob, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Terrific.
Welcome back.
Thank you. We're, we've updated a couple of things. We've reached out to Fussin O'Neill regarding the area of disturbance and I think Bert Corey had a conversation with their representative and they've come to an agreement that we are not over the threshold of more than one acre of disturbance as currently proposed.
So that means you do, you feel that you do not need to request a waiver?
Yes, that's what I believe.
Okay.
And we are fundamentally waiting on the sort of decision on the interpretation of the conservation restriction as it relates to our parking requirements. So we're a little bit on pause on that. And we're hoping that we can get the conclusion on whether that is allowed for, I guess, how it's interpreted, what that parking is allowed for. And then, so our traffic engineer has been trying to get on, but has had a hard time at this point to join in on the meeting. But he is very familiar with the site. He was involved in the reworking of the northern section of Chestnut Hill road there as part of that subdivision, looking at existing traffic volumes as well as existing and proposed uses. He thought there was no significant impact for traffic.
Well, I'd like to do, we just received that on
Yeah.
Friday. So, and I think the board wants to spend some meaningful time on the traffic for this proposed use. So if it's okay, we're acknowledging that it exists. It's, it's on, it's posted on the planning website, right, Karina?
Correct. Oh, no, yes, it is.
So the public now has a chance to take a look at it. And and so if there's, if there's not much more, and feel free to speak more to it if you'd like, but I just want to suggest to you and the board that it's okay for us to not spend much time on it tonight because we probably need a little bit more time to, to understand it. And then, even though it's not that huge, but, and then at our, at an appropriate future meeting, we would go right into that because that's a, that's a pretty important piece of this.
Yeah, I think there's not a whole lot of new information apart from that at this point, so I think since we need to come back for another meeting, we could certainly take that up at that point.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Stein?
Yeah, I know that we're not going to spend time on traffic report, but I just want to give the proponent a little bit of advance notice maybe to prepare for the next meeting. I, I read through the traffic report quickly, so maybe I'm missing something, but it seemed incongruent with my own personal experience with trying to enter and exit the site on a Saturday during a CSA pickup. At one point over the weekend, I was waiting behind a parked car. I didn't know that it was actually parked. I couldn't tell from my vantage point that there was no driver in it. But people are parking on Chestnut Hill Road when the parking lot is full. And I did, one thing I did pick up in the traffic report was that during large events, overflow traffic is directed to a lot across the street. And so again, I know we're not going to go too deep into the subject tonight. That's fair, but I think it's also fair to the proponent to be a little bit more prepared to explain how they're going to handle things if this were to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jesse, just a couple little detailed questions. Now, from what I understand, there's, there's a window of time for the CSA pickups, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
So the volume of traffic can't be spread out you know, like maybe a normal business, there's certain hours, so you're taking, you're taking, trying to put the vehicles on the site within a certain period of time. So if that, in addition to maybe the physical parking places, if the time window to get there is adjusted, do you think that may help?
Well, I'm not sure, that's a good question. I'm not sure because there's actually two CSA pickups, once on Saturday, I think from 10 to 2, which is sort of, I mean, that's a four hour window. And on this, on this Saturday, I happened to get there at about 12, so I probably got what they're the busiest time of the four hour window. And then there's one on Thursday, I can't remember what the hours are. But my point is, if they're going to be using, expanding the site for more use and more traffic than CSA pickup, this could be problematic.
And then if you, if you go there and the parking lot's full, it says come back some other time, which generates another whole car trip. Is that correct?
That is the sign I saw, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Can you hear me at this point?
Yes, we can.
This is Lloyd Bristol, the traffic engineer.
Good evening, welcome.
I'm having a hard time getting on here. You don't see me, I don't believe, but you hear me. So, so anyway, what we're talking about is looking at that list of events that they have, even if it says 200 people, that's people, not vehicles. They don't come to get in one at a time in a vehicle when there's those big events. They come three or four people in a car. So you're really talking down to 50 cars basically for that event. They don't schedule things with this barn the same day that those events are occurring. And second of all, that road itself has very little traffic on it. It's two-way traffic just for a short distance and then it's one way. And so basically you'd be, you're eliminating all the southbound traffic because it's only the people that came in the street want to come back out after having visited the farm. So if they park on the left side, they have a police on duty on the days of those big events so that he can direct traffic to the left side of the road or to the right side of the road. A busy street is somebody, is a street basically that would have eight to 900 cars going in one direction during one hour. We're talking about 200 people in, say for instance, 75 cars, 50 to 75 cars. But they don't schedule, you know, the running of the goats at the same time as that big event is happening. So it's not, it's, they're spread out throughout the year, they're spread out throughout the week. There is a steady traffic for members to come in and on Tuesdays or on Saturdays to pick up their portion of the fresh vegetables and produce. But they're not staying, sticking around. They're in line, they get their, their prepackaged vegetables, they leave. So it's, I mean, there's nothing else happening on that road. There's two houses and there's three actual occupancy areas within the farm, but those are for the farm workers. So they're not driving in and out all day, they're working at the site. So I would just like to let you think about it anyway, until the next meeting, what you're talking about is that these events happen over the entire year. And if you look at the, in the report, we have the graphs of the actual counts that were done in the parking lots. And if you look at the peaks, there's 600 cars at the lower lot, the smaller lot near the the farm itself, 600 cars in a month. So that's 20 cars a day on average, so obviously some days have three times, four times that. But it's throughout the day. Even an event for that 200 people lasts four to five hours. And people don't all arrive at the very beginning and leave at the end of it. Some of them, they do, yes. Some, some events are special with the goats. It's, there's two hours dedicated to that, whatever it is, play with the goats, so. I'm just, I'm used to dealing with roadways that have heavy traffic passing through. This road doesn't have that, just has very little traffic passing through. When I worked on the north portion of this roadway from the, if you go north and there's a 90-degree turn to the left at the stop sign, right where the new subdivision is being built, I worked on that roadway, I was out there a dozen times during the day, during the peak hours. And I mean, you'd be lucky to have three cars go by while I was out there. So there's very little through traffic. It's really just people coming and going. It's, it's almost like this is a private site that cars are coming and going out of a driveway rather than a roadway, a major roadway for the town. So I just wanted to at least have some say in what you're, while you're thinking about it during the next, before the next meeting. So if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments? Mrs. Latrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just wondering how, when you figure the daily averages, are you dividing those, the car numbers by 24?
No, no.
Because like Saturday, the average is eight cars, seems very, very low. That's one of the pickup days for the CSA.
But, but we're talking about during that, well, actually those aren't my numbers, but they're the counts that were actually for vehicles coming into the parking lots, these charts. And on the schedule for the year, those are just, you know, how many times a year they're going to hold an event and how many hours they last for. So if you're looking at the graphs, those are vehicles coming into the parking spaces, into the parking lots. Because they put counters at the driveway where you go into a parking lot, not on the side of Chestnut Hill. It's at the side of the parking lot. So as you drive into a parking lot, it registers that you entered the parking lot.
Is that just the CSA parking lot or both parking lots?
Oh, oh, both. There's two pages of graphs. One, at the top title, one is, the first one is for, we call it the CSA one, which is down near the where the barn's going to go. And they, there's two handicap parking spaces in that one and there'll be a handicap sidewalk going to the barn. But at the next graph page, the second one, and it says right at the top, it says trailhead lot, vehicle traffic, it's not person traffic. As I said before, a lot of times people come two, three or four in a car. You're going to bring your kids, you're going to have a car full coming and spending an hour or two when there's four hours slotted for that event. So it's not that everybody arrives at the same time. It's not like, you know, going to a movie with the one exception, the night movie that they have. They have a open air movie here for one event and that's listed on the list of potential, this year's potential events, which couldn't occur because of the COVID.
So how are the averages figured then?
If I may say, I believe these are three-year averages, so I don't know if the Saturday distribution has changed, if that's a more recent, I thought that was originally Thursdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Oh, okay.
So that might be why it appears lower at this.
So it's based on a couple of years with very low counts.
And this is DA, what we're doing now, just so that everybody has the most recent information, is we've asked our visitor services director to dissect those numbers so that we can come back to you and show you just the past year so that you have a sense of what's happening. But there, it's based on cars parking in the parking.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Mills, you had your hand?
Yeah, I just, you know, Lloyd, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One is, it's not just two houses on the street, there's a development that's being finished at the end of the road that people use if they're coming from town, they use that road to get in there. So I think there's going to be at least 11 houses down there that are going to use the road consistently. Also, for people in town that are going towards Marlboro, the PJX building or any of the big office buildings over there, I myself for 15 years took that road every day to go to. So, and the schools, any kids who are in the high school that go in the morning over to Algonquin, that's a, that's a highly used road on a regular basis during schools and I think even on the weekends when kids go to visit their friends in Northborough. So just a couple of points that I think us as the planning board are keeping in mind when we're going through this that I wanted to make sure you're aware of.
Okay, I mean, schools basically start early and they get out midday.
I understand, I'm just telling you from the standpoint of why we're concerned about the traffic on that road. Those are a couple of big issues.
Okay. The 12 houses up there, I mean, you know, basically what is drawing them to the center of town? The jobs are most likely a little farther away. They're probably north, head on to 495 pretty easily. I know working in these different towns around here that, I mean, basically it's, a lot of people are, the suburbs, suburbs are moving further and further west from Boston. And people end up traveling more to the east than they do into town every day. There are certainly services that, you know, they would go have a job at possibly, but I know that you say there's 12 houses. You would be surprised at what the average house is per peak hour, one peak hour in the morning, the rush hour coming out of a house is .75 cars per seven-five cars per hour. Okay, you have two or three people that will go to work. Possibly teenagers even during the summer and parents, but the statistics show that during the worst hour of the day, and that's what we always study, we don't study something that's the middle of the day, we study the worst hours of travel. That's why we don't do counts on the summer, because summer is vacation time, half the people are away somewhere. And you might have a very light traffic flow if there's this, you know, people who are gone on vacations. So, like, when we do a traffic study for the state, we don't count in the summertime, we do it during the school season. And the worst hour of the day is between seven and nine, it could be seven-thirty to eight-thirty. But that worst hour is only three-quarters of one vehicle per household. People don't have a really good handle on that. People say, that's ridiculous, there should be three cars per house in the peak hour. That's not true, it's when you have, you're looking at hundreds of houses all over the place, little subdivisions, medium subdivisions, large subdivisions. It comes down to be point seven, it's actually point seven-four cars per hour during the morning peak hour. Then the evening peak would be between four and six. Schools are already home, so just, that's just some statistics that you think about. We think about when we're doing a subdivision, so twelve lots times three-quarters of a vehicle per house is only nine cars come come and go out of there during the morning. And they're not gonna come out of that subdivision and head south, they're gonna head west. But going home afterwards, like you say, they're gonna head, they possibly can go up Chestnut, or they may be coming from the north, coming back in, because usually the heavy peak hour day of the day is for workers coming home. You know, it can be school getting out for some reason, but.
My my only point was that there aren't just two houses on that street.
Okay. Right.
I have a, an old two-seat sports car, is that considered three-quarters of a car? Any other questions or comments on this? So Karina, we have a, and first of all, thank you all for being with us, a request for a an extension of the approval period.
Correct. The current approval period was through September eighteenth. Our next meeting is scheduled for September twenty-eighth, followed by October nineteenth. So September twenty-eighth, the conservation is meeting again on October first, worst case for them to have an answer regarding SVT Sudbury Valley Trustee's response to the parking area. So.
So it would be appropriate then to request an extension to the end of the week of September twenty-eighth, which would be October second. But that's only one day after conservation possibly would meet. So, and then the following meeting for the planning board is when?
October nineteenth.
And so that would push the end of the week for an extension that would probably be more appropriate. Is is that something that you would request, Bob?
Yeah, I mean, we are a little sensitive to the time trying to get this billing, you know, in the ground and erect before the end of the calendar year. So I'm just a little concerned about time slipping by on us, but we're we're in the process now, so I I guess I'm not sure we have much choice.
No, you have a choice, you can you can request an extension to October second, or what is it, fourteen days later, the sixteenth?
With our hopes that the conservation are trying to return a quick answer to the the outstanding question at this point, I would hope we would have that information by the by the second. Yeah.
That's your request to
Yes.
extend the approval period for the site plan to close the business on October second.
That's please.
Well, oh, because September has thirty days.
Yes.
Right.
September twenty-eighth is a Monday. October first is the Thursday. October second is Friday, we usually if we extend the approval period, it's usually to the end of the week that we would meet. So in case something happens, we still have time to post another meeting and conduct it within that week. So are you all set with that, Karina?
So the public hearing would be continued to September twenty-eighth with an action deadline of October second.
Is everyone agreeing with that? So the first thing we do is entertain a motion to extend the approval period, Mr. Mills.
Make a motion, we extend the approval period for Chestnut Hill Farm. Major site plan approval to October second, that's requested by the.
Second for discussion.
Mr. Stein.
So we're meeting on the twenty-eighth ostensibly to vote?
No, not, I mean, we, if we can, we will, if we can't, or if we shouldn't, well, then we won't.
No, I'm just trying to understand, if the approval period is only going out to October second, then that's on the basis that we're gonna meet on the tw- on September twenty-eighth, correct?
We, if this motion passes to extend the approval period, then we'll be allowed to continue the public hearing to a date between now and October second, which would be the twenty-eighth, our normal meeting time.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman, do you think that is risky? I'm sorry, we're looking for advice.
I don't think it's risky, but it just seems like it adds an extra step, it's highly unlikely that we would be able to get everything resolved and then have it captured with a decision document with conditions by that night on the twenty-eighth. So that's why I I thought if if you just pushed it out. Believe me, you know, this this is a very popular project. We want to get it right like any other project, so. And, you know, if we if we can, we'll we'll move the whole thing right along as we do with anyone anyone else, but it's gotta be right.
Agreed, and so if that makes most sense and we could extend it out, then those extra two weeks? If that if that would allow for the due process to to happen?
Yeah, and if we don't need it, we don't need it, if we need it, then it's there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
So would that be Friday, the sixteenth, I I'm looking at my September calendar, but I can't see the October piece.
That's correct, Don.
Friday is the sixteenth.
Yep.
So that motion was made and seconded, did you want to withdraw your motion or amend it, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I I will withdraw that motion, make a new one, but just to be clear, I think Karina said our next meeting is the nineteenth of October after the
Correct. October nineteenth.
So that would mean we do want to extend it through till October twenty-third.
Correct. So the public hearing would be continued to October nineteenth with the planning board's extension for decision to October twenty-third, days beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, that, I think that's what we were trying to do, I was just
Okay.
Not getting it on my calendar here.
So I make a motion that we extend the public hearing for
Is that all right with you, Bob?
Yes, that's fine.
And DA?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mills.
I make a motion, we extend the public hearing for Seven Chestnut Hill Road Farm to October twenty-third.
The public hearing or the approval period?
Approval, sorry, approval period. The October twenty-third.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to extend the approval period to October twenty-third, close the business. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Bullerhand, yes.
One more time, Mimi, I didn't, I mean, Marnie, Mimi. One more time.
Latrell, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, so now we've extended the approval period, now we need to continue the public hearing to September twenty-eighth, Mr. Mills?
No, October nineteen.
No, we're gonna come back on the, we're gonna meet, we're gonna come back on the twenty-eighth.
Right. So I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for Seven Chestnut Hill Farm Road for September twenty-eighth at seven oh five PM.
Oh, and the action period to the, I see what you did, you added to the action, yeah, okay, I get you, I thought you were doing the standard, okay.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to continue the public hearing to seven oh five on September twenty-eighth, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Marnie?
Bullerhand, yes.
Very good, we'll we'll see you all and thank you, and please continue your ongoing discussions with the town planner. Making good progress, we'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item. And discussion items, people can just tune in, it's not necessary that the chair calls on you. For ninety-six Mount Vickery Road Flexible Development Concept Plan. Karina, can you update us on this, and also if you can, or Sarah, tell us and the public the section of the code that we're having this discussion item under, which encourages this non-public hearing discussion to look at the option of flexible development versus conventional.
Sure, at the last planning board meeting, we asked Michael Bartolini to return to this meeting for discussion in order to have him revise his concept plans to show that they're both at the same scale, his conventional proposal and his flexible development proposal, and also orient them in the same direction, so it was easier to compare. The reason he is attending a discussion item for this is that under the major residential development, there is a section, I'm just trying to get the exact thing, I just emailed this to Freddie, give me one second. Here it is, so under major residential development, which is such, section one seventy-four dash thirteen point two C one reads application requirements, the application requirements for special permit for major residential development are as follows. Preliminary meeting, prior to filing an application, the applicant shall meet with the planning board in order to promote better communication and avoid misunderstanding. So this is an opportunity to present an idea for development and talk about it before an application is actually submitted.
Thank you. And now tell us what's been submitted since our last discussion.
Since our last discussion, the opponent, Michael Bartolini, has submitted four concept plans. One is a conventional layout at ninety-six Mount Vickery Road showing six single-family house lots meeting the dimensional requirements in the residential A district, I believe it is, I just can't see the small print. In addition, Michael Bartolini has provided a conceptual flexible development showing thirty-five percent open space, which would be the ten percent open space and twenty-five percent common open space requirement, if I'm not mistaken. And then also a conceptual plan. You know, as well, that's a shortened road under the flexible development, which still has six house lots, just lesser frontage, smaller lots on a shorter cul-de-sac. Which means less pervious, impervious surfaces. So we have the conventional, we have a thirty-five percent open space conceptual, a twenty-five percent open space. And lastly, an eighteen-point-six percent open space version of a similar layout, still maintaining six single-family homes. And the difference you can see is gradually that as you go from thirty-five percent open space to twenty-five to eighteen-point-six, the open space restriction moves away from the back of the house, allowing more backyard where people typically mow, et cetera. In the thirty-five percent, the open space restricted area is relatively close to backs of the houses, which means it may invite you know, encroachments just by sheer human nature. You know, people not knowing they have a deed restriction as property transfers or sells. Not being aware that they bought a home with a restriction, or the restriction was never carried into the deed, et cetera. You want me to go on, or you want Mike Bartolini to speak to his plan, Don?
No, I think that's, that's a good overview, and will give Michael an opportunity to speak. You're on, Michael, good evening, welcome back.
How you doing? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Just, I'm actually, I'm here with my brother Tony and Greg, just to clarify, it's not just me. But can I bring up the plans, Karina, is that?
I, yep, I can give you that access. Alrighty, you should be all set.
I'll also point out while you're waiting that the property does have a wetland area.
All right, am I on now?
Do you, yeah?
Yeah.
I don't know, can you hear me?
We can.
We don't have the plan.
Can you see the plan?
Nope, did you press the screen share button in the middle, the green one?
Oh, hold on one second. Says you disabled it.
I promoted you to panelists, so I don't know.
Does he have to be seen in a video in order to share?
No, I can, no, it's, I I have it, sorry about that.
Okay.
You should be all set now. I apologize.
There we go.
I'm good now?
Yep, sorry, it was a
All right, you can see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the conventional plan. Sorry. This is the conventional plan here. So what we did to make everything uniform, we did the orientation so that they're all the same. We showed the ten percent open space that's in its natural state. We added the wetland shading. We added the detention basin, which wasn't on there last time. And basically, it just shows the the six lots and how they would lay out in conventional. And then for the sake of consistency, we just put the twenty-five percent back on on again. Again, did the orientation, the shading, the same. And then the board asked us to come back with a thirty-five percent concept. And then the board asked us to come back with a 35% concept. So this is the 35% concept here. This unshaded boxed area is the common open space. The dark shaded area is the natural state open space. Just honestly speaking for us, this is, brings us some saleability issues. And to be honest with you, from like a town perspective, I would feel like this would have a lot of enforcement issues with this. Just from people encroaching on it, mowing their lawns, doing things you probably aren't even aware that they should be doing or shouldn't be doing. I don't really see how this would work. Honestly, just for us, from a saleability standpoint, or from the town, from an enforcement standpoint. So this is kind of where we came up with the, I'm just curious as to what the board would think, but the 18.6% concept, which is here. So for us, this gives us a better saleability. I think it gives the town a little more open space. And it gives, I think, we think, better quality open space. I know from the hearing from the last meeting, there were some questions about the border open space as to the larger area open space that gives you a better quality. I don't know if you have seen the property over there. I think Freddie had gone out there. But there are, honestly, this section here has pretty much been used for logging. This section here is honestly the only area that's really still in any form of a natural state. I can show you the pictures. Give me a sec. I don't know, it's not working, but the it's honestly the one wooded area in the whole section. The only other wooded area here is along the wetland. And I know Concom would want us to protect that area as well, so that is why that is shaded. And just the benefits of that open space being down there, we know it abuts the recently acquired town-owned open space. Some other benefits to it, we get to take out that detention basin there, we put in bio-retention ponds, which is like, kind of like rain gardens, what we did on Leeds Way. They're a little greener, they're gonna be filled with natural vegetation. It would help with the, it's gonna deal with the stormwater. The bigger part of this is we're gonna have to reduce some of the impervious spaces, so we probably would need some waivers on the road. Most likely removals of sidewalks. I mean, it's a six-lot subdivision, I'm not really sure how much of a need for a sidewalk there is. Potentially a little narrower road. But it would give a little more of the feel of the last project we did on Leeds. And like I said, we know it's not the 35% you're looking for. But honestly, in terms of this particular project, we think it gives the best use of the open space and it gives a better project overall for both sides. So and to be honest with you, the 35% one for us, I just, I'm not sure, I mean, I know it's not, it's, it's really not something we could sell to our customer. And I don't think it's something that the town would want to enforce, or is probably even possible to enforce. So that's really where we stand right now. So I'm just curious to hear your thoughts.
Very good, Michael. We asked you to come back with plans that were oriented in the same way. And you certainly did, and giving us these options, if I'm right, this is one of the best and most detailed concept plans that we've seen. So there's far less unknowns in what you're presenting. So giving us, the board members, a lot of information as to what we would be getting depending on which direction we want to go in. So I'll open it up to the board, to any questions or comments. Are you, are you look, we haven't heard from open space on the, these concept plans. And that's one of the things that the board may feel that we need, we need input from them. Or we invite input from them before we sent you in a certain direction. So we don't have that tonight. And you can tell us how you feel about. You know, sometimes the proponent says, no, I'm out of time. I don't want to spend any more money on this. I need an answer tonight. Or you need a little bit, you're willing to wait a little bit longer. So I'll let you think about that. I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills? Questions, comments?
No, I just appreciate, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that the the plans themselves, very detailed and appreciate the, the two options for the three options presented. I think the only thing that, Karina, if you can remind me, if we go with the flexible, what's the required open space?
For flexible?
Yes.
35%, 10% open space, 25% common open space. So 10% stays in natural state in perpetuity, I believe, and the 25% can have passive recreational use on it.
I mean, I always see this, that'll be a big discussion point to be forward with the open space committee. If we go with this and don't do the
Breaking up Andy.
Can you hear me better now? I think that's the only just real discussion point that's gonna happen if we go forward with the flexible. If it's not 35% that the open space is gonna be an issue.
And to just be fair, Andy, since you're saying that, I forwarded the plans to Freddie Gillespie for open space to comment on earlier today. Because it's not a formal submission, there wasn't an actual distribution to all the departments, and Fred, Freddie made me aware that, you know, she hadn't received the plans and so she has them today and her intent is to provide some comment on them.
And do we know other sidewalks on like what's that other one, Boswell?
Boswell? I'd have to look more closely at the subdivision plans on record. Michael, do you know if those others, sidewalks, Boswell Lane?
I honestly, off the top of my head, I don't.
I think Hidden Meadow may, I'm not remembering it from when they were in front of us for modification, but I don't know about Boswell. I can look on Bing Maps or something.
Those are my only.
Thank you. Did, did you want to go, Mr. Stern?
There we go. Hey, Mike, I had a question regarding the the point of marketability. You said that there is, you had concerns about saleability of the units with the second plan, but not with the third plan. I was wondering if you could just clarify that.
You're talking between the 25 and the 35? Or are you talking about?
Well, the first, the first one was conventional, right? So, and obviously, the consensus seems to be we're in favor of flex generally. So of the two flex plans, the, the third one had, I guess, more marketability, better marketability than the second, if I understood you correctly.
Right. So I think, so the 35%, the issue that I'm having, or we're having, is that can you see this?
Yep.
All right, so it just, for us, it's an issue of saleability because I, I mean, these are not, you know, smaller homes. They usually come with people who want pools or amenities like patios or decks. I mean, this, this one in particular, it's only like 25 feet. They're not yards aren't really of any sort of size. And again, to be completely honest with you, what you're, what you're saving here as of right now is literally just giant piles of logs and sawdust. So the difference being between this one, and again, I, you're not saving anything of note in this open space. Like, there's nothing here that you're saving that isn't already touched. It's already disturbed. It's not like, you know, a natural woods. So when you go to this one, which is the one that we're proposing, which I think, you know, makes everyone, gives everyone a little bit of what they want. You're saving the area, which is this section here is almost an acre, directly abutting the town-owned open space here. And that gives you the only really natural area of the whole property. Now, what it does for me in terms of saleability, us, is it gives our customers more latitude to use their property.
So you're gonna basically, realistically, yeah, you're gonna landscape where the debris is.
Correct. I mean, there are gonna be patios.
I got it now.
There's gonna be. So, I mean, like I said, we, we, we understand it doesn't get you all the way to where the board wants to be, but it gets us, I don't know, we, we feel a better project for all sides as to compose to just like jamming it all in there. And like, you know, it's, it's something that we would be proud of. I think the town would be proud of.
And do you feel like on this plan that's up right now, there's any more, is there any more leeway in terms of returning any more of that to natural, open space?
I don't.
Just to make it a little bit more attractive to the board, maybe?
I mean, like I said, I mean, you're, you're, right there is almost an acre of land. It's not a massive piece of property. And just, we're trying to give as much as we can and still meet stormwater demands and still meet septics and still satisfy a customer. So for us, I mean, there's, there's really nothing more that we probably could give.
And the number of units looks like it's the same old versus this one, right? Six units.
They're all six.
Okay.
They're all six and to be honest, like the, the, the conventional plan works fine for us. Like, it's not, it just, we feel you know, tighter, closer communities. I mean, we're not opposed to open space, so I mean, it's, it's not something that we're against doing. It just, we want it to work and have it like in a common sense way, I guess. If that makes sense.
It does, Mike. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Mrs. Latrell?
Yes, thank you. So why do you want to go flex?
Why? We would like to go flex because we feel like it makes a better, tighter community. We all grew up in smaller, tighter lots. We're all used to knowing our neighbors, seeing them. We feel it gives a better look for the town, better look for the area. It creates a better, even greener project. So, I mean, there's lots of benefits to it as opposed to the standard subdivision. I would think it would benefit most people.
Okay, a couple of things. So the 18.6 is actually more like 13 because you figure the open space on the entire site, not just the upland. So all the open spaces. The other thing.
I didn't hear that.
Your internet, we lost you, Mimi.
Do you hear me now? So the open space has been figured on only the upland portion of the lot. And the bylaw requires, and the subdivision rules and regs require that the open space is figured on the entirety of the lot. So the 18.6 is actually more like 13. The other thing is that the flexible subdivision allows you to have smaller lots, less setback, smaller frontage in exchange for open space. And out of the nine objectives of the flexible subdivision, five of them refer to open space. The open space is a very important component of the flexible subdivision. And the requirements say they shall be 10% and shall be 25%. It's 35% is a requirement of the bylaw. And my feeling is that the legislative body votes on the bylaw. And there should be some comfort level and that's how the town has developed. And not, I don't think it's up to the planning board to decide, even though it says 35%, we'll just take, you know, 13 this time. The legislative body voted to build a public safety building. I don't think there was any thought that the Board of Selectmen would decide to put in a skating rink instead. So I don't know why, if a major portion of a bylaw is open space, that we would just ignore that. So my feeling is that if the 35% doesn't work, which I agree, I don't think it does, then just go conventional. Thank you.
Mrs. Holahan?
I no longer have a comment. Thank you.
So Michael, the the problem with the 35 percent, as you explained, was how close everything was to the back of the houses. And then we're looking at this 18%. What is the width of the shaded, so-called open space? That's the strip.
On which, it's 20, this, this strip here?
Yes.
That's 20 feet.
So there's a big difference between the 18% and the 35%. So if you widened that strip from 20 feet to, let's say, 30 feet, that would increase your 18.6% the way you figure it to another bigger number. And yet, you'd only be moving 10 feet closer to the back of those houses. And it's really only two houses. two houses. The one that's up there on Mount Vickery doesn't have much of a backyard anyways. But the second, second one in and the third one in.
Correct, but I, but the issue with that is I g- I have to make sure that I have room for the, the bio-retention areas. Um, and I know it's tough to tell on a plan, but topographically, it makes it fairly difficult. Um, I mean, look, like I, like I said, we're, we're happy with going conventional. Um, or is just trying to, we're trying to work to see if we can get to a common ground. Um, and I know I've heard the board say many times, each project's unique. So, I just, I'm not sure a waiver here would set any sort of precedent moving forward. Uh, but I was just trying to, we were just trying to make a better project for both sides. It's really, at the end of the day, what we were trying to do. Uh, if the board wants us to go larger than this, I'm not sure we can really accommodate it. So, like we said, we're okay with going conventional.
Can you put the convent, well, let's take a look at the triangle of open space at the bottom there. Right?
This one here?
On the eighteen percent, right?
Yep.
Triangle-shaped, uh, shaded area that you say is the only part of the site that's still in its natural state. Is that right?
Correct.
So, now let's go to the conventional plan. So, the conventional plan wipes out almost that whole natural state triangle.
I would have to put a detention base in it, yes.
In addition to that, yes.
That seems to me to be a very, um, high-priced, big impact between some type of flexible, and this conventional would be wiping out that, most of that triangle. I'll open it up to, uh, anyone else, public? Anyone?
Sarah, um, Freddie has her hand up. Freddie's all set. She's all set to talk.
Go ahead.
Let me make sure she knows. She must have a connection problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I, you know, allowed her to talk a while ago.
Now she's unmuted.
Yep, she's been muted.
Freddie, can you hear?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
She can.
Thank you. I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. We reviewed the last plans, but not this set. And we didn't create a position because it was just a discussion. But we did talk about how these narrow strips and small portions are, as, um, Michael said, you know, they're not defensible. You know, they, they just don't become open space and, um, I won't go so far as to say, speak for the commission, but in our past, most recent review of a subdivision, we opted not to take any, this was not a flexible, which has strong open space, requirements, but on a conventional for the ten percent, the Open Space Preservation Commission recommended, don't take it because it doesn't work. You've seen it in your own open space, um, surveys that, um, you just had a recent one done by Lucas Engineering. They don't work often. They're encroached upon, or invasive species, um, highways, or, um, the disturbance next to them really encourages invasive species on all these edges. Um, I'm not convinced that the triangle is, let's make a deal, we'll take that and not take what the bylaw requires. You know, it's not, the bylaw doesn't say you can take this much if you, eh, less open space, thirteen percent instead of thirty-five. And, um, I think the solution for what this bylaw was planned to do was stated by the proponent. Make smaller houses, push them together. That was an intention of these cluster-type subdivisions, which this isn't a pure cluster. It was an early model, but, you know, if you wanna make it work, the houses need to be smaller. And that goes right into our diversity of housing in the neighborhood field. And if you wanna have the huge houses with the big yards, and you don't have a lot of land that's upland, flexible may not be appropriate. And I, I, you know, when I compare the, um, just looking at it, the conventional to the flexible, I'm not seeing the net gain for why we're giving up the thirty-five percent. You have all that strip, if, even if you go to the, um, the supposed twenty-five percent one, that's really thirteen percent. Um, there's a lot of narrow strips. That's not usable open space that's going to stay open space. Some of that open space is right out people's back doors. You know they're gonna mow it. And of course, they, who wouldn't want to have a backyard? And the other thing is, the subdivision is, um, maybe, you know, I agree, the bylaw's not well perfectly done and could have improvements. But these subdivisions are basically forever. And yet, when you do these easements, if you don't keep renewing them, they go away. So, it's like we're giving up and not maintaining the benefit of the open space. So, I'm not. And also, as far as the degraded area, you know, yes, the intent is to have, um, natural open space, but if you're starting out with degraded open space, there's no reason you can't let it grow into natural. You could have a meadow, you could have a shrubland. Those are important habitats, um, to have today. And I'm sure that the logs will be removed once the subdivision starts getting developed. On the other hand, I know that whatever they put in here is gonna be a great improvement for the neighborhood that has had to live with a, a logging company in their backyard. So, um, I know Bartolini builders will do a nice job no matter what they do, but anyhow, that's it. Thank you. Can you mute me again, please? We have control.
Yes.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Do you need any more, Michael, tonight?
Um, I guess I'm just slightly confused because it sounds like everyone agrees the thirty-five percent doesn't work, but I'm also hearing that the eighteen doesn't work either. So, I mean, like I said, we'll do the conventional, but no one wants the extra percentage. I don't. It, I just, I guess I was just a little confused.
That's what we try to do. We try to get you confused.
Well, I'm wondering, would it help if the Open Space Commission met on this and voted on it, Freddie?
No.
Um, am I, um,
Yep.
We can do that, and we should do that. Um, we have never voted to, uh, violate the bylaw of the townspeople of South Beard Borough. That was voted on, two-thirds vote at town meeting. In all my years, we have never recommended to violate what is required. This isn't a simple, do what you think is best. It's shall be, which means must be. Like road frontage, like setbacks. It's not just do what you want. A- and that's what the bylaw says. And what we had seen historically is, there's a lot of, when we had more wide-open upland farms, there was a lot of missed opportunity because we didn't get the thirty-five percent when it was available. And now we have harder-to-develop properties with a lot of wetlands, steeper slopes. And it doesn't mean you, the, you know, if they want, if we want a bylaw that says thirteen percent, you know, we need to have that bylaw, but we don't. You know, we don't have a bylaw that says you can have a, a fifty-foot road frontage. And because we don't have it, you don't say that, you know, a subdivision can have that, because that's not what's allowed. It's the same thing here with the thirty-five percent. It's not us making it up. This is what was passed as your, um, flexible subdivision. So, I just don't see how you get around that. I mean, obviously, you're the planning board. You can approve what you wish, but I'll be happy, um, as soon as I can have a, a meeting, and I'll put this on our agenda. And, and get back to you, but yep. It's not clear. You're asking me to see if the Open Space Commission will agree to support violating the open space requirements in a bylaw?
I think you answered my question. Thanks, Freddie.
I just have one question, um, Chairman. Um, the, the topography of the land, so, we're increasingly seeing a lot of developments that are put in place that, I know it's not necessarily our, um, our, um, uh, I don't even know, um, legal requirements is to think about, but like, all I can think about is all this water issues that a lot of these subdivisions keep having. And so, from a topog perspective, like you mentioned a couple things, Michael, around the topography. Even in, in the, the kind of, uh, concept layout, like the original that you would do without the flexible, um, does that, do you really think you can get six houses on there without having all the issues?
Uh, yeah, we do. We, we, we have to go through, uh, stormwater, um, and those questions are all answered at that point. It's, it's, we do that through the Conservation Commission. Our engineer runs the numbers. Fussam O'Neill runs their numbers. Uh, as far as I know, we've never had any of those issues, so I can't speak to other developers, but um, we have a pretty clean record when it comes to that, so.
No, I guess I was just looking at that kind of space and hearing what the whole, you know, what the, the, the flexible bylaw is in place to do. And like, if you could, you know, maintain the house sizes that you're looking for, make it smaller, um, you know, make it five. I know you're still looking for six houses, but then that way you could get to the thirty-five percent. I mean, I personally like the fact that there's that acre of untouched land. But I am in agreement, like, as a planning board member, my job is to uphold the, the law of the town. Um, and not necessarily, um, put in restrictions that say, you know, people can do this or that. I would prefer to stand by what the town votes for.
Okay, we were just under the impression that it could be waived. So, I mean, we're, like I said before, we, we, we're okay with doing the conventional. Um, I think we were all in agreement that the thirty-five percent just isn't gonna work really for anybody, so. Uh, just trying to put our best foot forward and, uh, go from there. So, I just, we thought this might be a common ground uh, everyone would be happy with. So, like I said, uh, we're, we're perfectly happy with going with the conventional.
Anyone else? I'd like to go back to the, uh, um, you, you have the eighteen percent, uh, on the screen. To the right of the triangle, the shaded triangle. That's all, that's that open space piece. Is that right, Karina?
Correct.
And the town owns it?
You can see it leads over to Boswell.
Right here.
There's a thin strip, yeah, so right there, and then you have access on Boswell.
So, and the town owns? The town, the town owns that?
I believe, yes. Mike, is that, that's correct, right?
Uh, I believe that's accurate, yes.
So, the concern with the concern with the open space, um, owned by individuals, it's owned by the town, and this is, this would make, this would expand that open space by, you're saying, an acre. And, uh, if it's a natural stand of trees, um, then the concern about people mowing it wouldn't be there. And I think you said earlier about the strip between the wetland and the, the houses, the shaded strips, that's, you said is twenty feet wide. Believe you said that that was in natural state. Is that true also?
Uh, it's kinda like a, yes, it's to a, to a degree.
So, some of the concern about people mowing it wouldn't exist in that shaded strip either, would it?
Uh, well, that would have a natural, those are in natural state, so I'm assuming they'd be marked.
And people wouldn't be able, would be less likely to mow it.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm interested in this, in this plan, because as you said earlier, and I know I've said over the years many times, it's it's our job to, uh, understand the, the rules and try to enforce them, if we can. But we're also within our jurisdiction to, um, modify our adherence to the, those rules, depending on the value of the site. And in this case, you've got that strip, which is useless, pretty much useless, if there were homes where the wetland is. But you've got a wetland there.
He's wrong about.
There's, there's homes there?
I'm not sure. Are you asking me or Freddie? I'm not sure.
Am I un- unmuted?
Yeah, I just noticed that too. That is not town-owned property on the right.
The, if you can hear me, the only place where there's town-owned property is off the map, that very tippity point down below the map. None of those parcels shown on the map are town-owned.
Right, the piece to the right is, has a house on it with the driveway out to Boswell.
The piece to the left, and the piece below. Everything shown there has houses.
Yeah, I just checked it on the GIS too.
Okay.
Sorry.
The Open Space Commission thoroughly looked at all of the open space abutting it, and it's all below that point, and it becomes wetland, so some of that point is actually, um, protected as being in a wetland buffer from the other properties.
Well, is it the board's desire to send, uh, Mr. Bartolini off with our, um, opinion tonight? Or do we need more information?
Are you asking me, Don, or are you asking the board?
Asking the board. I mean, if we need more information, then let's define what we need and ask for it. If the developer wants to give it to us, yes. If not, then, okay. If, if the board is willing to send and, and state tonight, a- as the, the code requ- doesn't require it, it opens the door for us to comment on the options between flexible and conventional. And if that's what we're ready to do, if we need more information, then let's ask for it. If we don't, then we probably should express our opinion relative to conventional or one of the three flexibles.
Oh, I, I mean, I, I'll go first. I think, you know, I, I applaud your, um, your attempt to keep the open space as much as possible, but I think when we look at the overall, um, rule on what the, what space is supposed to be, the amount and everything, it's gonna be, we're gonna get tied down um, dramatically, and if we go forward with, uh, the flexible, people are gonna say that we shouldn't be doing that because we, we don't have enough open space. I mean, and, and in this case, it doesn't seem like, Don, like, um, Karina and Freddie just stated that, that that open space doesn't really tie to anything that could be, um, open up to a, a larger piece or a trail or anything. I don't know. how much the town's gonna cut out, so it might be easier for you, Mike, your team to go with the conventional.
Also, Andy, to answer your question, there doesn't appear to be sidewalks on Boswell, Middle Road, or Hidden Meadow in that area. Just so you know.
Yeah, so so for me personally, I'd be in, want to keep it consistent with the neighborhood, but not even with the
Okay.
That's my personal feeling.
Very good. Thank you. Andrew, anyone else?
Yeah, so I do like the flexible option, the third option. I just wish that our bylaw, there was a bylaw in place to have the leeway to do that. And so I'm in agreement with the other board members that, and the Open Space Commission, that if it doesn't meet the guidelines of the bylaw, then you know, in good conscience, I really couldn't support it. So I guess with the the conventional option would seem like the most logical at this time.
Thank you. Mimi?
I agree. In general, I always try and support the flex plan, but in this particular case, it just doesn't seem to work, so I would say it looks like the conventional is going to be the best option. And also Wells Lane, which is right next to me, which is a small subdivision, that has a sidewalk, and people use it constantly. Just as an aside on sidewalks.
Mrs. Houlihan?
So, of course, I would vote for the eighteen-point-six percent and just submit it as your conventional plan. But I'm gonna say I need to support the bylaw, so I do love the eighteen-point-six. I just, I can't, in good faith, be an elected official and not support the bylaw as it stands.
Thank you. So this may be much clearer for you, Michael, or may still give you some doubts. You've heard at least, I think, three members say that they like the eighteen-point-six, but there's not enough meat on the bone to get close to the thirty-five percent. And having the surrounding lot explained to me, I do like the eighteen-point, I like this this layout better than the conventional, but not enough to to disagree with the rest of the board. So if you want to come back, if you want to think about a different way to do the the flexible, we're wide open to it, and of course, you're always, you've gone through this process, and if you feel it, it's as far as you can go under this section of the code to have this informal meeting, then you're always to making your formal submittal for whichever plan you want to move forward with. But you certainly gave us some good materials to look at, and is there anything else from anybody?
Don, one quick question. There's always an option for an applicant or a future applicant to take one of those lots and dedicate it to open space as well, right? In other words, reduce their five homes or five lots in the flexible and have enough in one lot to dedicate it as open space. It sounded like that's something that Open Space Preservation Commission prefers over the strip. But that is an option, right?
Under the conventional plan.
Okay.
Yeah, you set aside a lot, or depending on the size of the subdivision. But after, what is it, two or three years, it disappears and a house is built there, and you wind up with zero open space. All set, Michael?
Yeah, I think we have our answer, so thank you for hearing us.
Okay, thank you and best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need a break, or do we want to move on? How about a two-minute recess? Mr. Mills?
I get motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion, hearing that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Someone else?
Oh, yes. Houlihan, yes.
We'll see you in two minutes. Thank you. Mimi, that's the second planning board dog I've seen today. I got to meet Pepper, Jesse's dog.
The attack.
Yeah, I was gonna say the attack dog. Karina survived the gauntlet as well.
Are we back on?
The recording's back on.
Okay, planning board is back in session after a two-minute recess. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Deerfoot Road Drainage. We'll ask the town planner, who's been working and spending a lot of time on this item, and allowing it to be on our agenda despite our lack of jurisdiction. I'll let the town planner data us.
Sure, so several months ago, as you recall, Deerfoot Road, there were lots that were submitted via A and R process to the planning board about a year and a half ago, maybe a little bit more. The, at Deerfoot Road Extension, and six lots were created from two larger parcels under approval not required by law and/or process, which met frontage and that they were on a way. The developer began to develop the lots and started building the homes, and I believe like in the last six months or so, during construction, there've been some concerns from the residents about drainage issues between property owners and also onto the existing roadway. So Denise Eddy, representing the residents, and they got together and they hired an engineer to do a study, a drainage study on the areas that they were concerned with. I believe it was one-twenty-six, one-twenty-six A, one-twenty-four Deerfoot. So if you're driving down Deerfoot, it's the houses on the left-hand side that were in the A and R plan of land. So in response to that, Brendan Giblin had Bowler engineers review the draft, the report from the wetland and PE that the residents had hired and provided a response. So after several rain events that were considered pretty extreme, not your everyday rain events, there were some issues with siltation and runoff. So two of the lots have a stormwater management permit, and two of the lots have an order of conditions. But some of the lots that the residents had concerns with did not fall under the jurisdiction of those permits to require a stormwater management permit. In any case, when these issues started happening, we were looking at them, and so Denise Eddy asked to be on Conservation Commission meeting, a Board of Selectmen meeting, and a Planning Board meeting agenda in order to express what they are experiencing, and then look for guidance and resolution, depending on jurisdiction of the board. So, over the last three to four weeks, the discussion was had with the Conservation Commission, and they determined in their discussions that the other lots did not warrant a stormwater management permit based on the thresholds of disturbance, and that they were pretty much have permitted what they felt were required to be permitted, with the understanding that the storm, the orders of condition lots still required certificates of compliance as closing out the order of conditions, which I believe one of them may still require that, and Denise Eddy can probably speak to that after, if I'm not correct on that. Then, in addition, the Denise Eddy presented to the Board of Selectmen, and they were heard. And to the best of my knowledge during that meeting, the Board of Selectmen indicated that, you know, their jurisdiction via the DPW was the roadway and the condition of the roadway and the roadway drainage, et cetera. And what's happening there is that there is two separate drainage systems kind of on either end of the project, from my understanding, and they're not connected. And some of these catch basins that are existing are not at the proper grade, and the road is going to be repaved, resurfaced in the near future. I believe Karen Galligan indicated, if not the end of September, early October, but as soon as they can, and that that would help mitigate the drainage issues in the roadway. So the last so coming out of that, the Board of Selectmen, after reviewing the Board of Selectmen's meeting of that evening and talking to Karen Galligan and getting feedback from Mark Purple, that Giblin Properties indicated that they needed an additional seven to ten days of from the Board of Selectmen's timeframe to finish their stabilization of the lots, of the yards. And also, the Board of Selectmen were going to wait to see, you know, does this drainage, does paving the road improve the drainage when that happens? And Brian Shea, Mark Purple, and Karen Galligan would then, if any issues still remain as far as the roadway is concerned, they would kind of brainstorm how, what next step would have to be taken. But again, that addressed the roadway, and that's where we are here today. Denise Eddy, and probably I see other residents from Deerfoot wanted to just express their concerns to the planning board, and the planning board see what they have to say as far as guidance and jurisdiction.
Good evening, Mr. Morris, Denise Eddy, one-twenty-eight Deerfoot.
Good evening.
Good evening. Most, everything that Katrina has said, Karina is one-hundred percent right. I feel like I'm on the TV circuit in the last month. I've been to all three, now three boards. What was interesting is, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen made a comment, and he said, what we have here, as he said, is we have a mirage of situations that go to different boards. We have lots that were, that needed no approval, that came under planning. We have conservation that's issued order conditions on lots, and then we have the street that we are responsible for. We supported this development in 2018. I say that because I want you to understand that we're not just a bunch of people screaming and hollering that we don't want development. We came, and I'm pretty sure I appeared before you in 2019 and said, as well as we spoke to conservation, that we have a problem on the street with the flooding. I will not deny that we have had water on that street, but not to the extent that we have it now. The plan by Bowler, according to our engineer, which you, I gave Karina all of the information, the pictures, the videos that we've been living with. But their plan showed water going from Lot One to Lot Two to Lot Three. And when that happens, it comes down from Lot One into the road, into the street, and floods. It also goes over to Lot Two and then over to Lot Three. Now, Bowler has said, and Mr. Giblin has said, their plan is enacted perfectly, and it's perfect. My assertion would be, if that is the case, then why, after the homeowner in Lot Three, who has been, in fact, in his home since November or late October of last year, has two new drains and catch basins been installed on his property to alleviate the water that's running off of the hill? Okay? Our engineer asserted that more than fifty percent of the lot was, in fact, disturbed. He asserted that there should have been a site water management plan for those lots, and he asserted as well that this was more or less a real small development of six or seven lots that should have had a different oversight. And I guess what I'm asking here today is to help us with the drainage, if you have any authority over those lots, which were A and R. But also going forward, there has to be some kind of oversight, so that, yes, maybe in all intent and purposes, we thought that these were going to be A and R lots. But as I pointed out to Mr. Giblin, maybe when the the people who are taking the trees down went a little too far, took more than the necessary vegetation away. We were living with, that vegetation had trees that were two and three hundred years old, that were holding the water back on that hill. Okay, once you stripped it, now we're in a terrible situation. There has to be oversight to say, okay, if that happened, it may have been a problem, it may have been no one's fault, maybe they took a little too much down, but there has to be a measure of compliance, and somebody has to be watching what's going on, because, again, at the Board of Selectmen, one of the select persons said, you know, the lots, and I believe one of you said tonight, maybe it was Mrs. Houlihan, that the lots we have now are not the greatest lots that are left, because obviously builders are taking the lots that are the best ones first. So these lots have water problems. They have site work. So these lots have water problems. They have, uh, site work that has to be done because they're not perfect. And we are in a situation now where conservation says we need another catch basin on the street. And I agree with the Board of Selectmen, but my concern is this. If we pave that road and a new catch basin is not installed, we are going to be told we can't open up the road again. And that's not fair to the taxpayers because if you're going to pave this road, then we should make sure all the problems are solved before it gets paved. And conservation thought we should have another catch basin. What we're seeing is there needs to be oversight. This should have been according, you have the report, I, I made sure that you had it. Our, our, um, engineer said basically that more lot mass was cleared than what had been anticipated. And I would say, I, I respect Bowler, I respect what they say, but to his own admission, no one from Bowler has stepped foot on these lots for over a year. So how does Bowler know in fact how much has been cleared? Our engineer came up three times, did site measurements, took measurements and told us this is how much is, has been removed. Their answer was to us, oh, well, the homeowner has in fact taken trees down. The homeowner has taken no trees down at all. He's cleaned some brush, but he's taken no trees down. So what I'm saying is we need some oversight in the town of Southborough just to help these developers stay within the path that you have in fact defined for them as a town and within our bylaws.
Go ahead, Mimi.
Um, thanks Denise and to all the residents. Um, I did listen to the Conservation and, um, the Chair Ben Smith made some comments around they don't actually write the zoning and so they're enforcing what's there. Denise, I wonder if you can kind of, um, high level that the question is, is, is the Planning Board, I know kind of, um, again, like I'm new, I'm still learning my, my ropes, but from the zoning perspective, conservation basically said, you know, we can only enforce the zoning as it stands for them. And they were very specific that they actually couldn't enforce, um, based the stormwater process. So is that something that we as a planning board could like rewrite the, the zoning with conservation?
I, I, I believe that because more of, you know, there's a proportion, Karina, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a portion of the land which is not disturbed, which makes it an A and R lot. And when you go above that, I would tend to think that you as a board could insist on a site water management plan, but one has to know that this is happening. But if you don't know what's happening and no one is sort of a gatekeeper, then this stuff is slipping by and then we're having problems. But to your point, I think that that can be done.
Just to be clear though, um, an A and R process, um, does, does not involve what gets cleared or, um, the size of the lot. The only thing an A and R does is say that the parcel has frontage and access to a way. So there is no site plan. It's a, um, basically a plan of land creating or moving property lines. So there is no drainage or, you know, wetland protection or setback or anything dimensionally required to zoning as far as area of the lot. It's strictly A and Rs are for frontage and away so that a parcel can be created or modified. So, um, that's just to clarify an A and R.
My understanding was when there was a certain percentage of the lot that was cleared, there was more oversight than it was just, you know, you have the right to do because you have the frontage and you have the side lots.
That's with conservation. So stormwater management permit says there's a 50% of the lot threshold. So if you-
But here's, this is what happened. It got, these lots got approved as A and R lots without conservation. Now conservation doesn't have any rights over those lots because they came before you and got approved as A and R lots.
No, that's, it's just not tied like that. It's not related like that. So-
So what I'm saying is, is that when the parameters changed, it was already out of the control of conservation to make an, an assertion, correct?
No, conservation has no jurisdiction over the creation of a lot.
Okay.
It was my understanding in listening to Ben, it wasn't necessarily, so an A and R is like, that's like a state thing, like that, that's something we can't control. But I think from the perspective around what is written in what stormwater management can be controlled. Ben had said, that's a zoning issue. So I guess to Dawn and Karina, is a zoning issue, is that a planning board? Can we think about how to optimize things? This increasingly comes up and I've lived through this on my own street. And so I, you know, I do bring a little bit of bias here and, and so how do we help neighbors and developers kind of be communal, work together, but not have people have to deal with, um, the hundred-year storm every three days?
I guess my question-
Hi, May, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mimi.
Um, so what was discussed at the Conservation Commission meeting was the stormwater bylaw, which if more than 50% of a lot is cleared, then that kicks in. So that was where, that was where some of these lots fell through the cracks because some of them didn't hit that 50% threshold. So, um, what um, Mr. Smith had alluded to was that we could write a better stormwater bylaw. So I think that is something that the Planning Board could work on with conservation.
Which would be, which would be positive because as these lots are become available and are not ideal, there are more, um, issues with developing them. And that was brought up at the Board of Selectmen saying that, you know, today the lots that are left in town are more difficult to actually maneuver. So originally, to your point, Mimi, that yes, they thought that they were not going to, you know, take away more than 50%, but then they did, which meant they were, to your point, uh, they should have had a stormwater management plan because once they went over that, but there has to be some oversight. And what I said to Mr. Giblin was maybe what happened was when the guy took the trees down, he took more down than he had, you know, he anticipated. But, a- a- and he said to me, well, it's only 2%, but the problem is we have a problem. And no matter what it was, it, maybe this should have been a development. Seven houses, six house slots. We had a small country road with only, uh, four houses being serviced by this small country road. Now all of a sudden we've added another seven houses and the four that were there, that the road is still the same and the drainage is still a country drainage system and it's the same. And now we've set, taken all of this water off of the hill which runs, um, like a river. The poor gentleman who lives at one twenty-six A, which is lot three, he had a lagoon for a backyard. Now the way they solved it is to come in and put two separate drains, uh, catch basins in his yard, which, you know, I'm sure he wasn't anticipating that. But that's what we're, he had to be done in order to make his, his yard viable. Those pictures that you saw that I sent to you, those are his lot. That's his backyard.
We have a couple other residents who would like to speak. You're all set.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
John?
So this is actually John Cusick with Bowler Engineering. I would just like to make a clarification to one of the comments that was made. The lots have not been graded more than the extent of the bylaw. And I know that's what the assertion is here, but um, I just want to put that on the record that has not been graded more than the, the, um, 50%. So I just wanted to clarify that.
John, John, hold, hold on. Um, and Karina. Someone owns the land, comes to the Planning Board with a A and R plan. Planning Board endorses the plan, which created or creates a new or several new frontage lots with enough area and frontage to support a single-family home. The proponent leaves the Planning Board with a plan that opens the door for the construction of a home. What's the next step? I believe that the next step is to go and apply for a building permit.
Uh, there's a couple steps prior to that. Um, if it was a conservation jurisdiction by way of wetlands, which there were on one side of the road or a stormwater, uh, management permit, we would need to apply for those first. Uh, additionally, we need to apply for our septic system approval through the Board of Health. Once those are complete and in hand, that is when we apply for the building permit.
So now we go to the building permit step. Thank you, John. Which you get from the building department, the Code Enforcement Officer for the town, the building inspector. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the building inspector looks at the plan and checks to see if it's a single-family home, it meets the setbacks, so on and so on. So signs off on the building permit. That opens the door for a house to be built. So it just seems to me, I, I know Denise has been saying that there needs to be some oversight. So to me, after the A and R, the Planning Board, unless somebody tries to alter the lot lines that were endorsed or alter the frontage, that the Planning Board's jurisdiction from that step on doesn't exist. We have no more jurisdiction for those things that are occurring. And it would seem to me that it was, would be the building inspector who would either, uh, who would, you know, work with the Board of Health, work with the developer, the builder, to make sure that what is being built matches the building permit application. So to me, that is at least one step, one portion of the oversight that exists. And that would be the building inspector. And then if, if it also involves a conservation uh, permit or a Board of Health permit, then there's additional oversight from them. So I, it seems to me that there is oversight, whether it's being performed in this case. I don't know about that. I, I don't know. And maybe others do, but I believe that there's a system in place that does provide the oversight. Please disagree if, if you feel that I'm not describing it properly.
I guess my question, Denise Eddie, I guess my question is then the building inspector would be in charge of the actual execution and examination of the topography versus the building. I think her jurisdiction is more on the lot lines and the, um, actual physical building of the structure. I, I don't know whether she would have an engineer, uh, at her disposal to see if in fact the plan that has been presented to um, the town is the same plan as, or the execution is the same as the plan. That would be my question. That's where I think it's slipping through the cracks because I, I believe that she is the oversight. But I believe that she's taking into consideration the actual building of the structure, um, and passing it along uh, via the electric and everything else. But I don't know that she is the one who's in charge of the actual, uh, engineering. That's where I think it's falling through the cracks.
Well, the building permit application may not, may or may not require topography be shown on the building permit plot plan. So if the plot plan that's submitted with the building permit as required doesn't show topography, then she wouldn't have recourse to determine that topography other than conservation stormwater management permit.
Correct. This seems to be a gray area.
Well, again, you're in a planning board meeting discussing, in my opinion, things that initially through the A and R process involved the Planning Board. But the issues that you're concerned with now don't, in my opinion. So because we're all neighbors and because we're concerned and we want to make sure that we're not saying that it's out of our jurisdiction and it really is, we're, we're allowing to have this discussion on, on a planning board meeting. But again, it's, it's, it seems obvious to me that the issues that you're dealing with now involve other departments other than planning. We're glad to host this discussion and hear from the neighbors, but I just want to make sure that the message is clear that the issues, the storm drain issues, the topography are all issues that are outside the Planning Board's jurisdiction. Who's next?
I have just one other question, um, Mr. Morris. Would this have been considered a development if it was taken into consideration its entirety of all six houses that were built?
No, no, because they're frontage, they're frontage lots. If you, the, the, the development in the town that I recall from a long time, about 35 years ago, was Pine Hill Road. Uh, Pine Hill Road had, uh, if you're familiar with that, it's over by Framingham. It had a, uh, a house, a barn and a, um, a horse track. And it was all just pastures. And it was probably half a mile of roadway that was all carved up into frontage lots. And it was a primitive road, probably more primitive than, than Deerfoot at the time. And the developer, house after house along both sides of the road were built. And the road was destroyed with all the, you know, construction vehicles. And we asked the developer to pave the road and the developer said, no, he wouldn't. And the town wound up, uh, doing that. It was more, far more than six houses that we have on, on Deerfoot. But they were all frontage lots and the, um, the, the property owners had the right, once they had their, their lots approved to, uh, to build the homes on them. And it was, it was many more homes than, uh, than what we have on Deerfoot. And that's happened all over town, but maybe not to the extent that we're talking about today. But that's the rule. It's a front, if you have frontage on an existing way, then it's not a subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, um, I'd like to.
Can you introduce yourself, Marguerite?
Oh, yeah, thanks. Um, Marguerite Landry, one thirty-four Deerfoot. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you for your time. I realize it's frustrating for everybody. Um, is the A and R lot a state designation or is it a town bylaw?
It's a state.
Okay. And so is, is there no way for the town to tweak its bylaws so that if, if a lot is bec, is transformed into something else during construction, uh, that becomes a violation of the bylaw?
What is something else?
Well, say it's an A and R, say it's, say it, well, these, these lots are both having terrible drainage issues and they're sending huge amounts of stormwater into each other's property and into the wetland with a lot of silt. It seems to me that that should be a violation of something because it's independent of the legal structure. It's making a big mess in the wetland. And I just, I just think that the, the whatever legislation we've got in town for this should be looked at because it's going to come up again. But the, what I would really like to say is I, um, is there a reason that the DPW is in such a hurry to repave Deerfoot Road? That's, I, I, I'm, that's a, that's a, just an open-ended question. Um, I feel like the drainage is, is not done. And as Denise said, once it's paved, um, we're stuck with it for three years and it's going to be like a toboggan. We're stuck with it for three years and it's going to be like a toboggan run. I don't know why there's such a rush to pave it. Two of the drains are. One of the drains is functioning but perpetually clogs. Another drain gets some water, a third drain gets no water whatsoever. We need a drain according to our engineer in front of one twenty six. Now those two catch basins that are four hundred feet apart now are not talking to each other because the pipe has been. Apparently not functioning. Sometimes Karen says the pipe is working. Sometimes we're told that there's no pipe there at all. I, I would really. I would really just like to go on record, even though it's a planning board meeting, that it would be a, a serious error to pave this road at this point. You would just be. Covering up a big mess. And I really think that there's no transparency on what's going in there for drainage system. And I think that the. Residents and the town should know what's going in there before it gets done. I just would hate to see pavement slapped down on that and then. It doesn't solve anything and oh, we can't dig it up because it's just been done. I, I'm sorry, I sound quite frustrated on this, but I, I do feel like we've been butting our heads against a wall on this for two and a half years and. The, we're not getting much clarity on it. Thanks. That's all I have to say.
Well, what you just said, have you said that to the selectmen?
Yes, and they agreed with us as near as I could tell. They, they are in charge of the road and there's all kinds of conflicting. Conversation going on on what's happening with the drainage. Some people have told us that the pipe, the, the eight inch perforated pipe, Karen has said this. Running from in front of one twenty six A to in front of one twenty two is supposed to continue to function. Tonight I hear that it doesn't function at all. It's two separate catch basins. There's no linkage between those two. So we're in the state of, we're living on this street. It's flooding every time it rains. And we feel like we have no control over what our. Exit from our, from our dwellings is going to be like. And it's, it's just, it seems to me that. The selectmen do have charge of the street. They know that, but it's just very difficult to understand. What the plan is aside from slap pavement on it and then everything's going to be okay. Because I don't, I don't, I don't believe that. And I've lived on this street for quite a while and I just don't think that paving it is going to solve the problem. So. There you are. Anyway, thanks for your time.
My name, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Nina.
Marguerite, correct me if I'm wrong, but I. Attended the selectman's meeting and I thought that. Some of the catch basins were above grade and that the idea was if they paved them, then the water would flow into them. And I, and I thought that they did agree to put in another one.
I, from what I hear from the DPW, they have, if they're putting in another one, they're going to have to lay pipe from that to the one and one twenty two. But from what I've heard, there's no plan to put pipe in there. The issue is complex. The, the original, the, the, the original drainage pipe between the basin at one twenty. Two and the basin at one thirty four, right in front of my house, was an eight inch corrugated pipe that's been in there for fifty years. When they brought town water into that street, they put the town water pipes right on top of those drainage pipes. And I remember saying to one of the construction people. Are the water drainage pipes still in there? And he said, oh, yes, yes. And then later on, they said, no, they've been crushed. They've been removed. So I don't know what's really happening with that. But if those two basins are not talking to each other. Even if they put another catch basin in the middle, where is it gonna, where is it gonna have an outlet to? Because you've got the water main right down there on top of what used to be the drainage pipe. So. None of us knows what is underground there. All we know is that we would really like this drainage to be done properly, which would solve most of the problem. And I'm, I'm just, I'm frustrated because if you've got a water main down there, can you put a pipe under it afterwards? No, you can't. You've got to pull the water main up. So how are they going to do that? Yank up a water main and then put a drainage pipe under it and then put the water main back down. That doesn't make any sense at all.
This would be the time for you to speak, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make one clarification for the record in that there has been zero Conservation Commission violations. Again, I just feel obligated, obligated to say that there has not been any. Deviations and impacts to the wetlands on site and your, your agent can verify that as well. It's important to state that, so.
John, for the benefit of the planning board members, I just want to give you my understanding. I spoke with the DPW. Just to get an understanding of what the drainage is in the street there and my understanding that. There were two catch basins added at the EMC end that are not fully functioning until the Deerfoot Road gets paved because of the, the grade.
That is correct.
Yeah, and then there is an existing basin at the Dunderdales in the vicinity of the Dunderdales property, which I'm sorry, I don't know offhand, the exact number. Is it one twenty two?
It's one twenty two.
One twenty two, okay. That, um, there is a twelve inch or larger new pipe that. Runs to a manhole that was installed or is being installed for, to provide a sump, which eventually discharges into the hundred foot buffer. Of the wetland. So those are two drainage components that I was made aware of in discussions, just so that there has been some. Drainage improvements made, but some of these rely on the paving, the final paving to be. Graded in such a fashion.
Karina, if I'm, if I may break in with that, one, the two new sumps that were put in. One of them doesn't take in any water at all, but they're both put in a pipe that runs. Literally, it, it exits right next to my property, literally six feet from the wetland. So basically, if all that stormwater goes down there, it's going right into the wetland. This is troubling to me because I think the wetland is a delicate structure. But the other part is all the water that continues to come down off the hill, one twenty six and, and one twenty four, where is it going to go?
And may I interject? It's Lisa Dunderdale and I live at one twenty two Deerfoot Road. So currently that water, as you know, Marguerite and neighborhood knows. It goes down the road to one twenty two. And with the volume of water that's coming off the hill from the, from all of the, the trees and vegetation that have been taken down. That water is so forceful that it goes past the catch basin at one twenty two and continues down the road. To the front of one twenty, one eighteen, some of it will start to go over the hill. I don't know if it's made it down to the drain at the bottom of Deerfoot at Route nine, but we have a river in the road. I know that the last, the last, um, the last storm on eight twenty three. There, it was probably the most sediment I've seen in the road. I'm sure that you all saw the, the video. It was a sandbar in the middle of our road. So we've seen this, actually, it's been a year that we've seen this sediment in our road. We've seen a river rush down our road. They really need to take a look at the drainage system. And if they go ahead and pave it without truly knowing if it's going to work. You know, I think that's very wrong. We are taxpayers. The other issue that I have at one twenty two as well as next door at one twenty is there's water trespass off of that. Number one twenty four lot. It flows down the hill. Into our, into our lot, also into Melissa DeCosta's lot at one twenty. I'm not sure if she's on, on the phone, but you know, she's, she has said that. And it actually is a river between our two homes and it goes into the street. So my question is, you know, this was, this was very informative. I understand. Mr. Morris said, thank you for asking about the steps. To, you know, building on a piece of property. So if, if it's an A and R lot. Are you, is the planning board looking at the top, the topography? And maybe this is just an unusual situation. Certainly know that Clifford. Has had their share of issues with the hill and all the building on that hill. But who looks at the topography? Who truly knows that the engineering design is going to retain the water? On the lot? Because I can tell you right now, if, and I don't know if that's just the case for. For. Stormwater permitted lots that you have to build it in a, in a way that whatever stormwater. Comes onto your lot, you're going to keep it on your lot, be it through vegetation, through detention ponds, through rain gardens, whatever it takes. But who looks, who's in charge of that first step and says, let's look at the plan? Is this truly going to work? Or do we have a grade that will make it very difficult to prevent water from flowing into the street? Or down the hill into other people's yards?
The answer to your. Question is no. Planning board does not look at topography.
Okay, and do you know who does?
I think if you look down the. Next set of. Approvals, it would seem to be. Least the building inspector.
Okay. Thank you.
But it may not be a requirement to show. The grading of the site relative to the construction of a house or a garage or something. And I. We have to be careful. The planning, see, I, I was. I wasn't usually reluctant to put this type of thing that's outside of our jurisdiction. On our agenda. Because those who have jurisdiction. Would rightfully think that we're overstepping our authority. So we're allowing this, but with, and, and in the process of. Letting the public hear and letting others hear. Town officials that may be listening in or will be. It's, it's, it's a good thing, but we, we just want to make sure that. You understand the limits of the planning board's jurisdiction. And topography. This goes right to your question. Planning board does not look at topography. If it's on the plan, we look at it, but. We don't know what's going to be built there. It's an A and R. Sometimes it may, sometimes it may show a, a home, sometimes it just shows the lot. Correct me if I'm wrong, Karina.
No, there are certain ground features to be shown, but it doesn't require topography.
Who else? Anyone else?
Mr. Morris, I'll just, I'll just close with that. I think is where my oversight is, that there has to be some kind of a mechanism where this can't go on. As I said, these aren't great lots that, that are left to be developed and we're living with a nightmare. And you, once you give approval to the lot because it meets all of the requirements, the building department is really not set up to do what we're talking about. There needs to be some other kind of a bridge there. And other mechanism for oversight. That's really where my, what I would like to emphasize. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments?
We have a hand up for Denise, for Lisa Dunderdale and for John Cusick.
Go ahead.
This is John Cusick. I just think I forgot to take my, my hand down, so I don't have anything to add.
Oh, okay.
And nor do I, but thank you very much for listening to us tonight. We appreciate it.
If you remember, Karina and I were on Deerfoot, was that in June or May? We were, we were there, Karina, and it's a good thing you and I both drive Jeeps. It was, it was like going. Up a stream. It was a torrential downpour and we, we put eyes on what, what you were. Complaining about and, and, and taking your videos. We, we saw it. We were there. We got soaking wet. I was here this afternoon and I was pleased to see the improvement, especially relative to the. You know, the big open grass areas that now have grass on them. But your concerns about the street are still there and I would hope that you can continue to work with the selectmen. Under whom is the DPW and the building department. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Next item on the agenda is. Economic Development Commission Committee. Village Mixed Use District, V MUD bylaw status. This, we'll ask the town planner to give us the update on this. We've all seen recent emails on this also. Go ahead, Karina.
Right, so. The Board of Selectmen have asked the planning board for a joint meeting on October sixth. Of which all planning board members said they would be available in order to. Discuss and provide feedback for the EDC's consultant Judy Barrett, Barrett Land Planning. To proceed on working on a bylaw amendment for the Business Village District. In particular, the downtown area. So the next step is this joint meeting on October sixth. And. That will be the meeting at which the stakeholders can provide feedback so that that project can have a direction to move forward. With more of a consensus. Is anticipating.
So now we have a work product that was produced and distributed. We all have it. When do we get it today?
Friday, I received it in an email. I forwarded it to everybody this morning.
Yeah, so we have something to look at and hopefully the October sixth meeting will be productive.
Yeah.
I, 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 when I responded to Selectman Healy, I asked if there was going to be, if the selectmen were going to issue a, an agenda. And any other materials that may help us. To learn more prior to the meeting.
If we receive anything, yeah.
Yeah, we all saw that.
Anything, we'll forward it immediately so that everyone can be prepared for giving feedback or input or whatever they. Feel is important.
Any other questions, comments on that discussion item, EDC, V MUD? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is a discussion item, Public Shade Trees. That was in our packet. Karina?
Sure, just quickly, this is a work in progress. The, a group of us met Mark Purple, Town Council, Karen Gallagher, Mimi Luttrell. I was there.
Sam.
Sam Stivers, that's the last person. I see him in the, in the attendees. So we met a few weeks ago and Karen. After that meeting, Karen drafted a kind of a guideline on tree removal for public shade trees. And that's currently being reviewed. Comments have been provided by me and Mimi and Sam. Sam actually developed a flow chart. Quite impressive, Sam, I should say, for the Tree Removal Project Program clarification. So it's a clarification document that we're working on. We're slated to meet again Thursday morning, so it's a work in progress. And once, once I think that that document's squared away. And becomes more of a final draft, it'd probably be more valuable to discuss it with the planning board at that time. Because Mimi's on the team representing, you know, planning board input in general. So it's, we're working on it.
Excellent progress on that and that will build our. Pro, our Tree City program, having that new document.
Right.
A question for the planning board. A question for the planning board. Um, Town Council had suggested to um, to clarify things, to have, right now, there's some hearings are before the tree warden and some hearings are joint between the tree warden and the planning board if it falls under scenic roads. And Town Council had suggested that um, all hearings, just to clarify, be joint between the planning board and the tree warden. And my question is whether the planning board would want to entertain that, if they would want to have all tree hearings be joint hearings or not.
And I just want to add something to that. There was also, um, there's a, in the state legislature or somewhere I read this, I just can't pull it right now, um, that, you know, you have a public shade tree. If it's to be, if it's, the question is to remove it, the tree warden has the jurisdiction. If the tree is on a scenic road, then if there is need to have it removed because of a uh, roadway project or a street improvement, then it would come before the planning board for uh, a tree room, scenic road, public tree removal, public hearing. And that would be in conjunction with the tree woods remove, the tree warden's public hearing for removal. So it would only be that case on a scenic road. Right now, it's, I believe it's a public shade tree on a scenic road that needs to be removed because of roadway construction or improvement or widening, that would come before the planning board.
Right, so that's what um, state law stipulates. But um, Town Council's point was, we're a home rule state. And if we decided in Southborough that we wanted all, any tree hearings to come before both the planning board and tree warden in a joint hearing, that's something that we could um, address through our town regulations. And my question is whether the planning board would want to do that or if they would just want to leave things the way that they are.
Um, Mimi, I agree with what you said about Town Council and the home rule. The state, the state law um, does specifically state in more than one place that the town can make uh, further um, requirements for taking care of planting, uh, pruning and removing uh, public trees. And so that's, that's perfectly within the town's authority. And I can tell you that a long time ago, when I was on the planning board, we had tree hearings for, and it was, it was common to have tree hearings for the removal of of uh, public trees. And then it it kind of um, stopped. And we've seen, you know, hundreds, if not thousands of tree, street trees in Southborough come down with no hearings. We've had some, but I don't have a problem at all uh, having it as you you suggest. Joint hearings. But I'm just one of five.
I'd be comfortable with that also, considering the massive one that was just recently taken down.
I thought that was the way it was supposed to be in the first place. So yeah, I'm I'm in agreement.
Five to zero. So you, are you going to take and run with that, Mimi? Going to take that back?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Anymore on um, public shade trees?
Um, is there anybody in the? Oh, no. Okay, never mind.
Once again, really a lot of progress on you know, the the public trees in town. Okay, uh, other business properly before the board is the planner's report.
All right, just briefly, um, want to bring your attention to um, the planning board, this uh, 2021 meeting date schedule that was put on the Dropbox. If the planning board members would take some time to review that schedule um, for the next meeting and let us know if there's any changes you want. Um, Sarah put this together. We want to, we went um, avoided school vacations, um, holiday weeks and um, tried to follow the standard uh, date timeline, including uh, the annual town meeting, which is now anticipated last Saturday in March. So that's included. So if you could look at that um, in anticipation to talk about it at the next planning board meeting, then we can.
One quick comment on that?
Yeah.
The um, March 27th, the town meeting, it says March 27th, 2020.
Oh, yeah, sorry. But that's our mark at Sarah, so I can give it to you tomorrow.
And also there was, o- over the years, there's been sensitivity to having a planning board meeting the Monday after the Super Bowl. Hopefully that'll still be a big concern to us uh, each year. Uh, so sensitivity to the Monday after uh, the Super Bowl. And also March Madness, uh, not necessarily the the uh, Final Four, but for the uh, the final game. I don't know when that, what that date is, but it's it's usually a Monday, right? March Madness, the college basketball.
Not my year.
Sorry.
That's been, that's been the uh, the, I guess, not as important to some as others.
We'll figure it out.
Yes, we, we know you will. So if there's anything, anymore planner's report?
Uh, yeah, um, just let me see here, um. Done. Saint Mark's did.
One question on public shade trees before we sign off.
You want to ask it now?
Should I ask it?
Yeah.
So our scenic roads, I think we have 24 designated scenic roads. Um, the question was whether the planning board wanted to entertain a a bylaw to add more scenic roads to that list. Something to think about.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, uh, Saint Mark's, part of the dorm project that they started working on, some of the landscaping there, uh, they made some minor changes, but it was all in conformance with native uh, species that was done during the approvals. Um, a few locations were swapped out because they uh, kept some of the um, paved sidewalk, paver sidewalks where they were. Um, just to note that um, the EDC has grants available for small businesses, five employees and under, I believe up to $10,000. So if any small business is listening and they need help because of the pandemic, that they should contact the EDC and potentially get some assistance through that grant program. Um, I think that's it. The last thing, let's see. Um, I forwarded you information regarding the municipal vulnerability, vulnerability preparedness program that Melissa Danz is working on. So you should have gotten that email so you can review that document. And just read what it's all about. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I see it's 9:57. Um, we could wrap this up by 10 o'clock. Approval of meeting minutes, August 10th, 2020, Ms. Sir Mills?
Uh, I thought Mimi had one other question.
She asked it.
I asked it.
Oh, okay.
It was riveting.
Make a motion to approve the uh, meeting minutes from August 10th as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion? All in favor, Morris? Yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Bro, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda says the next meeting is September 28th. Anything else?
Not that I can think of.
Means motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made in second and any discussion? Hearing on all in favor, Morris? Yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Bro, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, everybody. Thanks all.